It is fine, purely if we could call the regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Amherst and Guggenheim Village to order, please, by standing and touching the clock. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Engel?
Present.
Mr. Zappo?
Here.
This is Douglas, here, Dr. Messer, this is Wackel.
I implore the agenda this evening would be to adopt the agenda as I presented, and I know there were some updates to it this afternoon, I believe. Do you have a motion? And a second? Do you have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion or comments on the agenda? If you're seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Douglas, I'm Dr. Messer. Aye. Mrs. Wackel.
Aye.
Mr. Zappo.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye. Item five will be hearing in the public, and there is no one signed up to speak address to us this evening, so we can move on to item six, which is the treasurer's report. I'm going to review it.
Okay.
I would like to welcome Sarah Terrell. She is the newest candidate. There's actually a few that aren't here tonight, but I'll say she's the newest for our half. We are so excited to welcome Sarah into the treasurer's office. She will be doing payroll and benefits, administrative assistant. You'll see the job description a little bit later in the agenda, which is a hybrid of our current payroll and our benefits records. And then, I just wanted to say that she comes to us with her bachelor's education, she comes with seven years' experience in the office. You currently work for Gnome, right? Yes. And she's a highly productive individual. I think she has tremendous capability to learn a very tough role of payroll in this district. So, Sarah, welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
Uh...
We can introduce her, too.
This is my daughter, Parker. She'll be around, probably. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity, and really excited to be a part of the team.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
All right, next thing. Just in the gender review with Mr. Engel and Mr. Molnar Friday morning, we talked about ramping up the efforts of the Finance and Audit Committee. In the past, in my tenure here and the year before that, Finance Audit Committee met twice a year, which is basically what is required to go over the forecast, to go over the prior year's fiscal audit. But I really feel like this needs to be ramped up a bit in order to increase the knowledge and participation, not just of the committee, but this Finance Audit Committee, which is currently made up of Mr. Engel and Mr. Zappo, and it potentially includes a few new members, but in the future, some of the financial information could be and perhaps should be disseminated by the board members on the Finance and Audit Committee. I feel like, I love to teach, I'm not a teacher by education or experience, but I would really like to teach the board members more about school finance, so that you're more well-versed in the topics of school finance. So, I would anticipate that we will meet next time again in May, if not sooner. May is typically the forecast update that's required by statute, but we also have a fiscal audit that we need to review, so we can hop over to the next, that's the segue. Financial audit for last year, fiscal '22, the Audit Exit Conference is tomorrow, and several of the board members will be meeting. And just so that the audience realizes that three board members can be in one place for the exit conference, simply because it's not a meeting of the board, it's a meeting of the auditor of the state of Ohio. Just know that a confection of the audit, it's not completely finalized yet, not finalized until it is released by the auditor of state favor, and it should be released within two to three weeks. So far, everything has been very positive. It's been very easy to work with the auditor of state office this year. Definitely more of a well-oiled machine than it has been in the past year, so I look forward to great things from the fiscal audit from last year. Next. So, this is the report that you see frequently. It is the financial recap, both from a month-to-date standpoint, so February of '23 compared to '22 and '21, and then from a fiscal year-to-date, which is recalled, '07, '08, and '09, February. So, our year-to-date numbers are on the right-hand side of the spreadsheet. They are organized and sub-titled by five-year forecast lines, which is the same way you all see the five-year forecast in October and May. The green highlights are typically, are definitely, where we have favorable variances over the prior year. Just recall that favorable variances for revenue is more revenue than we received last year, and a favorable variance for expenditures, we spent less in this fiscal year than we did in prior fiscal year. You'll see some notations on the bottom, line 101, which is real estate revenue. Just wanted to point out that we received two advances. We only received the second advance in February of this year. Sorry, I'm confusing myself. We received two advances in February '22, so we received only the first half of 2022 this February. We received another advance in March, that we have here, and then settlement action is tomorrow. So, I should know more about the year-to-date real estate revenues as of tomorrow. If you all have any questions, I'll just say the biggest variance in the report is in the other revenue line, line 106. We received $208,000 this year, $150,000 last year. We did receive the old cap year lease buyout in February. That's what threw that into a variance status. Other than that, if you look at the lower right, we are running at a deficit right now of $839,000 dollars that could be rectified in the fall with the real estate settlement expected public utility property, the allowances to be paid to us. Any questions? Will we move then to the recommendations then?
Certainly.
Sarah. I did it, I don't know why I didn't use... Well, we really don't need that slide, so let's let the presentation catch up to us. What you'll see, you always see from me for the midterm of financials, is a two-part financial reconciliation. You'll see a financial summary by funds and special plus center. You see the forecast report for general fund, 001, and the emergency levy fund, 016, and then you'll see the monthly checklist. In addition to those financial, which is the second item, we have the approval of the regular meeting minutes of February and the special meeting minutes from March 7. That was the visit over to the health flex. There are appropriations changes, just two funds, Powers Principals Fund and the Auxiliary Fund for this year. Auxiliary is the state fund that goes through us to St. Joe's. And then, we have quite a number of donations that need to be announced by the board. And that's it for this one. Does anybody have any questions?
Would I change a motion for items 7 and 8? Do you have a motion and a second? Is there any questions or comments on those items? Here, you're seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Douglas, aye. Mrs. Wackel, aye. Dr. Messer, aye. Mr. Zappo, aye.
Mr. Engel, aye.
Motion passes. Moving into the superintendent's report, just a moment.
So, seeing me, I take the pleasure of my reports and introduce maybe two new staff members to the district. It's an exciting night for the, you know, we look back at all the wonderful staff we have, board members and administrators, teachers, staff members, we just have a phenomenal staff, and so if we really had to add a few more, it's just exciting. So, tonight, we have two to introduce, and hopefully we'll get that up in a moment. But first, I'd like to introduce Mackenzie Hall. She's going to be our new Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Going through a great process and had many different rounds and many different interview people involved, and so I just wanted to share that, you know, she's highly recommended. I've been talking to former superintendents like Bob Scott, who says phenomenal praise for Mackenzie. One of the things that was so apparent when she met with our staff and teachers, and everyone just felt like Mackenzie's someone that they could go to, someone I liked in my classroom, someone I could connect with, help me out with projects and things. And so, it was just, it was a phenomenal process, and she's a phenomenal person. Bob Scott, the superintendent, said it was much more difficult a conversation to have Peter Tyler. So, he said, "It's so difficult," but if he was still here, he would be fighting for her. So, I want to introduce Mackenzie. Mackenzie's here with her husband, Mike, and also with her children, Cole and Carter. And so, Mackenzie, is there anything you want to share with the board and their family?
Sure, yeah. I just want to thank you for the opportunity from your team. I am thrilled to be here. I'm just being pretty about health, we've been renovating it, it's going to be done someday. It's been a process, but it's coming along, and we're excited to be a part of the community and now a part of the solution. Thank you so much for giving me this great opportunity.
Absolutely, absolutely. Good for you. Welcome to the combination.
Did you shop over?
What?
Did you shop over? Or did you have a little help?
I had a little help.
Mike's got the shop over.
Yeah, he's here, maybe in jail. Also, I want to introduce David O'Daly, who is a graduate of Steel, is an Amherst resident, very resident, but his kids have all gone through the Amherst schools. So, David seems like Polly and Trent, correct? He was a varsity basketball player, by the way, so I'd welcome him in tonight. David has been working in human resources for 15 years with my source, and he's just had a desire to come into the district. And Polly is an interconnect specialist in North Ridge, North Ridge. So, you're familiar with the education world, and I'm sure David is as well with all the stories, you're pretty cool. So, we're proud of David, he's going to be our new Director of Human Resources, and again, just phenomenal process. Everyone was involved, and he was like, "Yeah, the Amherst's choice, number one." Christine Ryder's been so forward to working with David, and David's going to come in at the end of May first. So, that'll give him a whole month to meet the staff, the relationships, work with everyone, and prepare for the summer, which needs to be crunch time for some things in January. So, I just wanted to introduce David O'Daly to the team as well. David, good luck. Want to share anything?
Sure, yeah, just appreciate the opportunity, looking forward to ending the ground running with it. I know human resources, and that's one of the things where I wanted to, got to come out and be able to support the community, the staff, and everyone, and also looking forward to that opportunity and honored to be given this opportunity, so thank you.
Welcome to both of you. Sitting right there.
Right there, right there. I'm busy with the presentation. She happens to see if I can multitask, I can do my presentation, Lauren.
That's all you have to do, Lauren?
That's all I have for today.
Wow. Sarah, I know you have a lot.
I do, I have a few things. I have, I have a few things. So, I'm very, very excited to share two projects that we've had going on throughout this year. The first one, I know I shared this with the board on Friday, you all have hard copies in front of you, our Suicide Intervention Prevention Guidelines. This has been a project that started at the beginning of the year with all of the, our social workers, as well as our school counselors, coming together to review guidelines and procedures we use in other districts and to decide what we felt could work for Amherst. And what it does is it formalizes the, what to do when, and it also provides resources for teachers as far as what to do when. You'll notice that there's a flowchart in there. Each, each building and each counselor group took a section. We have a flowchart here for teachers that say, "What happens when you become aware of a concern outside of the school, outside of school hours? What protocol do you follow?" And so, we had even one of our school counselors said, "You know, I've always had a question as to when I called a parent, and now we know." You know, now there's no question, and so if a parent's been asked, these are our procedures, and this is what we follow. So, those are the Suicide Intervention Prevention Guidelines. And then, the next one, Mr. Nick Dorr has been the champion for this one, our 504 procedural guidelines. And again, looking for something that can streamline our process across the district. So, it's informative for families and for parents, if they come to the school with a concern, we can direct them to flowcharts and information in here as far as what to expect, so they don't necessarily feel like, "I made the call, what next?" You know, and feel like their concerns are being put out to avoid. There's a process, and this outlines the process. So, not only can parents follow it, but the school is following it, and it's the what to expect. And so, again, in here, Mr. Dorr made a beautiful flowchart, but it's very easy to follow, and it's got all live links to all of the different forms, information, procedural safeguards that we would be using to provide for families and provide for teachers to use. That's Nord's Nick Dorr. That's right, Nord's, the new Nick, new Nick. Is there a byline here for Mr. Dorr? There should be. Actually, so I can just tell you, these were also vetted by our Giselle Spencer, who was one of our attorneys from Ennis Britain, and she looked over this, and for this one, the 504 guidelines in particular, she said that it is so well-written, she thinks we should take it to the national conference circuit and present it. Because of Nick Dorr. So, Nick, along, he kind of, during our first PD day at the beginning of the year, had the school counselors, they'd all gone through a training with Steve Riegaske from the Northeast Ohio ESC, and they took all the information he had presented and had decided what, how they were going to format it and what would work best, and then Mr. Dorr finished putting it together for us. Nice job.
Are there policy signings that we could...
Right? I should have had his picture on the back, this little bio.
I think the experience has now set a precedent in the district that if somebody needs me to make a flowchart on their guy.
Oh, he's become a flowchart guy. We were actually at a building admin meeting the other day, talking about our multi-tiered systems of support procedures in each of the buildings, and at, Nord had a flowchart up, and they all sat back and were like, "That's a Nick Dorr flowchart." And then she was like, "It sure is." So, there were those two things. And then I also wanted to give an update on Little Commiss Pre School. As we all know, we went to go tour varsity and had a lot of discussion afterwards regarding some of the finer details of whether the project might work or might not work. At this point, we're tinging that to the back burner while we continue to look at other options, including a possible option to stay on-site at Powers, at least for next year. But we've also got another couple areas that we're going to revisit, that we've visited in the past, and we want to kind of revisit again to see, knowing exactly what we need, what options might be out there. So, at this point, Mr. Molnar had shared with Mr. Zevnik?
Zevnik.
Zevnik, from the Metro Parks, that they can go ahead and start advertising, because they've been holding off on advertising the space until we knew what we were doing, but we told them to go ahead and, you know, start putting it out there so that they can get someone to fill the space. So, that's where we are with preschool. Can you keep me up?
Questions for Sarah?
Or Nick?
Or Nick.
We always had a question about that.
Yes.
So, right now, the thought is we're looking for more space from now, not necessarily a whole separate early childhood center right now.
Right now, we know that the need is more immediate than the time to put a building project together for an early childhood center. But whether that looks like an addition, whether it looks like a separate facility, whether it looks like just extra space, we don't know yet. So, but I know that's your dream.
But I think that would be something that would be with the planning group.
Yes.
The community planning group, correct?
Yes.
So, that would be something that would be on their radar from that perspective, which I think we already know that. Okay? But I think now, I think Sarah's just trying to get ready for next year.
Yes.
Right?
Absolutely.
So, you still can build, but you got to, it's a longer process.
You got to do something in the interim while we're waiting for that.
Other questions for Sarah?
I have one thing, and I feel really bad, because your, this is beautiful, two just like super clear areas. I'm sorry, I would have done it too soon if I didn't finish reading it, just like that was just something to enter in there, and then they didn't return us. I put those pages.
Okay. Sorry.
Sorry, it is really beautiful.
That looks like it's how it's printed.
I didn't want to like edit it, but also...
Yeah, that's just a printer.
On Nick's documentary.
Of course not. It's just how this one came out of the...
He's right now.
Yeah, that's how you are.
No, this is, I took a screenshot to show what the...
Oh, gotcha, okay.
I'm sorry, I don't want to edit it. That's what I...
Well, I appreciate you bringing that up.
Any other corrections for Sarah?
Are you seeing that?
If not, we move on. JBS report, the JBS board met last Thursday, so we're ahead of the game with Mr. Dorr. We are moving along. We are in the process of hiring a company to make some more recommendations to the exterior of the building, which has to be addressed because it's heating, because it's so old. So, we're in the process of doing some, getting some cost factors to that, because we know that, just like we experienced here, the cost that we had pre-COVID has escalated a lot. So, hopefully, we will have some reports back at the next board meeting in April that, you know, so we can make some movement on what we're going to be able to accomplish this summer. We also, the other big talk was putting in a new program for truck driving, for LCE drum drivers. We were concerned about where that training would occur because of the parking lot, but however, when they came on-site and looked at that, they are thrilled with the one parking lot that's a mess that we thought would have to be redone, they don't want to be done. They said, "We prefer it to be like this," because they said, "We're going to tear it up more." So, leave it alone, we would prefer it to be a mess, because that's reality, you know, when they're doing things. So, we're working diligently on trying to get that program in place as well, okay? It will probably start as an adult ed program initially, just because there's a lot of adult ed program, people would ask about that before it would become a school program. Questions? We will be meeting there in April, on the 24th, at 5:30. The actual board meeting will be a little bit later than 5:30, because when I attended the two, when I attended the meeting this week with Easton there, they did not do it after the board meeting, which I thought was not a good suggestion, because that way the students and everyone that's there from Amherst had to sit through the board meeting. And they had to play a couple lengthy presentations. So, we will be touring at 5:30, and then the board meeting and dinner will follow.
Figures. Figures. You add that to it, right?
So, and everyone, of course, be notified of that, anyone is welcome to come. I don't know exactly what student will be giving the tour, if it'll be Amherst student, so. And if you, the question that will need to be answered for, like you might let me know, will be if you want a tour of the entire building, or if you just want a tour of the program that the students in. Personally, I think I would prefer you to do the entire tour, even though it'll take a little bit longer. That way, everybody will know when we come back and start asking for dollars. You know, you become the, for this community, you become the spokesperson that, yes, that levy or that money will be needed, okay? So, that's the only update that I have on that for you. Any other committee reports, any legislative report this evening?
Yes. Well, the people, thank you so much. So, last month was pretty agreeable, because it was pretty much about Senate Committee on which just passed the past couple weeks. So, in response to that, the State Board of Education, I won't go through all that, but basically, they proposed a resolution requiring the board's commitment to preserve transparency and public participation in Ohio's control of education. Next. Okay, so we will go through some House committee activities and then Senate committee activities. So, the first one is the biennial budget, House Bill 3, and they will hold this week, actually tomorrow, Thursday, a public assessment on that. And then, one of the biggies that, trying to decipher this as well, is House Bill 1, which is a modified law regarding property taxation and income tax rates. So, according to financial, fiscal analysis by the Legislative Committee, they see that income tax is estimated to reduce, the income tax cut is estimated to reduce the general revenue fund tax revenue by $2 million. It would also eliminate 10% rollback on residential and agricultural property, which in turn will cause local taxpayers to make up the revenue, or most schools and local governments will not receive that money. And then, House Bill 920, which has been in practice for years, kind of plays into this as well, whether it applies or not. If it does not apply, then schools will experience reduction in tax revenue from inside mileage and voted upon fixed rate levies. And if it does apply, then residential and agricultural property taxpayers will have their taxes automatically raised to offset the reduction in evaluation created by the decrease in the assessment percentage from 35% to 31%. 31% to 35%. Yes, which is the 10%, so it's factored into that. So, either way, school districts and local governments would experience a loss in revenue from mileage. It's like approximately $360,000 revenue loss. House Bill 6, I'm just going through, it seeks to enact the state woman's sports act, so they will require schools, state institutions, higher education, and higher colleges to designate separate schools that can use sports for each. That's House Bill 8, seeks to enact the parents' right to require public schools to adopt a policy along parental notification of student health and well-being, and instruction materials with explicit content, I'll say. House Bill 11, that's another one that's going to come up again and again. It seeks to establish the back tax scholarship program to begin operating for next year and repeal the educational scholarship pilot program. Okay, go back, yes, thank you. So, this allows the back tax scholarship program permits elementary students to enroll in the educational environment that their parents deem is the best fit for them, whether in a traditional school, homeschooling, or some of these... whether in a traditional school, homeschooling, or some of these community non-chartered, non-public schools. They require the Church of State to establish an educational savings account for these students to purchase educational goods and services. And just the main thing is where students go, state money goes. So that's a concern for early performance of public education. And House Bill 12 is a companion bill to Senate Bill 1 that has passed recently. So again, renaming the Department of Education and creating a new position of Director of Education. And it also accelerates the functions and responsibilities of the Board of Education as superintendent of public instruction. So some Senate committee activity. Senate Bill 6 prohibits the state teachers' retirement system and serves a school retirement system, among other systems, from making investment decisions for the primary purpose of implementing primarily social corporate governance policies. Senate Bill 11 expands eligibility for annual scholarships, again, allowing students to go to other types of school, and will raise the tax credit for homeschool. It's from 250 to 2000, so almost a tenfold increase. Senate Bill 14 looks to allow school districts to employ veterans who met teaching requirements but do not have licenses. Move on to the next slide. Another interesting one, Senate Bill 49, so they look to enact what they call the religious expression day. So it would require school boards to adopt a policy providing students with religious accommodations for free meals to get excuse action foods. And they look to add certain legal holidays to the non, non-across-the-list of major churches, holidays on the calendar. Okay, yes, and then two bills that recently passed out of the Senate would be Senate Bill 17, they require, it requires the state board to update the standards in model practice for financial literacy and entrepreneurship in rates 9 to 12. And Senate Bill 30 allows persons 14 and 15 to now be employed between the times of 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. during school year with parental consent. She ain't excited for me. Oh, thank you. So some new bills, the House, we have House Bill 103, which establishes Ohio Social Standards Task Force to develop new social and academic standards for the use of next, well, 2024 to the end of our school year. House Bill 117 eliminates retention under the third grade reading guarantee. It expands the grades from which intensive reading and intervention is required. Senate Bill 79 seeks to make changes to drop-off prevention and recovery of youth schools. And Senate Bill 66 requires public and private schools to transmit, transfer students' records within five school days. And last slide. So upcoming events and trainings, so tomorrow will fill out, but it is the State Legislative Conference going on at Columbus, the Special Education Law Workshop, March 24th, it's virtual or in person. It's meant for lawyers in it to get their credits. And the OSBA Forum, March 27th. It's a free one-hour forum, where you can hear from OSBA's local and legislative experts on the public education topic. And I guess in that, we said this first quarter of the calendar year, the Northeast Spring Conference, we offered on two days, it's just, you have so many people in our conference. So Monday, the 27th, I'll be going, then it's in Warren, and then March 28th is in Springfield. Yeah, and that's it.
That was a lot.
Yes, it was, I'm sorry. But there's a lot of interesting things going down in Columbus. So a lot of everybody needs to know some stuff, and you know who our local legislators are, so if you feel a certain way about something, please contact them.
There is a lot going on, and it really can have a lot of impact, especially from the money standpoint.
Yes.
So let's hope that some of these things don't get passed as they are presented, because it will present a whole different picture to every school district in the state. And how we do things will be completely revamped, so it would be for us all to make our thoughts known, knowing our legislative people in that. But I think that documents have indicated that most of our legislative people are not in favor of this. So, but just hearing that from us, because we were very well with them and have been very involved with them, it would be great for all of us to send them an email and let them know that.
And if you're wondering what to write necessarily when you're advocating for public education, Ohio School Boards Association website has material they can help you write a letter. This is your proponent for education, for public education in Ohio. They have pointers on what you should say. We've done letters as a group. Yes, very important advocacy is for all of us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities, something, committee report?
Yep, indeed. I got an easy one. I threw it away. Yeah, it was easy. So the facilities, the committee has been getting together, and we're really excited to say that we're going to Avon Life Transportation Center this Saturday to take a tour. And we're also going to go to the Avon Performing Arts Center. And Mark and I are on that committee. And so Mike filled in with research, and we talked to the attorney. And we would like to extend the invitation to the other board members to go with us this Saturday. I would really highly recommend it. I know I've been to the transportation facility, and it is, it's something out of the world. I've never been to Avon Performing Arts, so it's going to be something new for me. But if the other three of you would like to attend, we'll be meeting there from nine, at nine o'clock, in Avon Life first, and then we'll be traveling to Avon at 10:15 to do the tour over there, and we would like to have the other three to come.
And your report?
I had an easy one. I have an Amanda Canda Albo's.
I don't believe there's any other reports. Then we would move on to item 10, which would be personal recommendations.
So we have a few personal recommendations this evening. I'd like to recommend the board personnel items 10A through K, which includes our items for Nancy, David, and Sarah. So again, welcome. And I'd like to recommend the board proof, personnel items 10A through K.
A motion and a second on the floor. Is there a discussion or comments on any of those items?
Just welcome.
None, please follow.
Mrs. Gales.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Zappo.
Hi.
Item 11, speaking on the agenda, the educational recommendations.
We just have a couple of education recommendations. Mostly the items have to do with some student services, for students who have alternative facilities. And also, item E is the updated school calendar for the next school year, which includes conference dates and times, open houses, orientations. Also, does Sarah get to go here? I'm sure we got an hour before the meeting. We have one slight delay on there. I think we had fourth and fifth grade times flip flop. I think fifth grade's turn to go first this next year, don't we, Alex? So, hi.
Oh, yeah.
So I was able to update that, save the media, put it in the drive before the meeting. So what's in the drive is the updated calendar. So that's what will be up here this evening.
Like, which date do we get? If you know that, what's our?
Surprise. Wait, after tomorrow, we put it on the website.
August 21st.
Jan, is the one attached?
That one is incorrect. The fourth grade and fifth grade are the only two things that need to be flipped. So fifth grade is at four o'clock.
So the date?
The 25th, 21st.
June 1st?
August.
I was like, what?
August 21st. That's for open house. Fifth grade is four o'clock. Fourth grade is 5:30.
So that's the update for item E and F. So I'd like to recommend education items 11A through 11E for work.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion or comment? None?
Mrs. Gales.
Hi.
Mr. Zappo.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
By knowledge, there's no need to make a session this evening. Therefore, we entertain a motion or adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on that matter?
Yes. I'd just like to thank the students who are filming. Thanks so much for coming to the meeting. I know this after school, and it's very appreciative that you guys are coming and doing this. So thank you. And I know the community loves it too, so very nice.
So it's not, it's not.
I know, I know. Yes, I do.
It's the junior high.
Yes, I do that.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Gales.
Hi.
Mr. Zappo.
Dr. Messer.
Hi. Mrs. Wackel.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.